Okay, can your screen still move when you're doing what you're doing or should I put you back to host?
Yeah, it can move.
Okay.
Yeah, can see that. Thank you very much, Justice. Thank you. So first of all, what I want us all to know is everything that we talk here, we are not educators, we are just here to help ourselves to know that we need to learn and to remind us of some setting, understanding that we we miss when we are watching the educators here. And also, everything that we say here is already recorded as well. Especially today, we are going to talk about the MT4 and pending orders, which is already made by Mr Nathan. So it's like, hello, we already have the recording there, so we just go through it like we're rising and show you where you can find it in case you want to know more about it. Am I on the right track? Do you guys get me? Yeah?
Yes, yes.
Good, good.
Yes.
So first of all, I just want us to go here on the Facebook page to see where we actually can find this training. So if you go on the Pips and Trips Worldwide, click on it, we have the trading session here, that trading session, you click on it. Alright, I can see Justice here. Alright. Wait, cool. So all of our training sessions, which Mr Nathan, Mr Morgenstern and the other leaders have made are all here, which you can get access to 24/7. Everything is here, you can watch it day in, day out. The more you learn, the more you earn. That is what you should know, you should keep in mind. Everything is here. Today, we are going to talk about depending orders, how to take dependent orders, which is already here. So if you scroll down, the string trading. Okay, we have the MT4 over here called how to copy and paste. Everything is there. Can everyone see it, please?
Yes.
Cool. I think, and wait, I'm coming. We have the, what is it? Is the pending orders, the pending orders, the pending orders, where is it? Now, this session break, not that one. I remember I saw it this morning and I was like, okay, everything's here. So do you have to go over and over again? Uh, it should be. Okay, I think I'm missing it somewhere. If anyone can see, you can just stop me, please.
It might be in the guide section.
I'm at. Ah, okay. It's here. Here we go. I was in it. Pending orders.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I see it, please?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, yes.
I think the lesson for today is done. Am I right or wrong?
You're wrong.
Nice try.
No, no, nice try. We're here to assess you, to see what you can do. Come on.
That is cool. That is cool. That is cool. Alright, um. We are going to move on to the MT4 straight away to know what to do, how to see the chat, what does these signs means. So first of all, we are going to do it on the phone, yeah? Everyone normally use the phone, so I'm coming. Let me check. Oh, sorry. I was talking to myself. Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, cool.
I couldn't hear anything.
You are mute.
Yeah, I was just talking to myself. I realized that I was new.
I think I'll turn your phone to host so you can share your screen.
Sorry. Oh, cool. Cool, cool. So what I want us to do is go to the MT4 on the phone before we go on the laptop. How to download it? And we all know that if you want to download the MT4 on the on, you go to your App Store, which I'm going to demonstrate it so that everyone can see and know what to do. I'll just stop sharing this screen and make myself the host over there. Okay, cool. Can everyone see my screen now?
Uh.
Oh. No.
There you go.
Yes, yes.
Great, great, great. So first of all, if you want to download your MT4, you just go to your Apple Store or whatever phone you use, you go to the store, the full store, then, oh, this is not it, sorry. I support how to use the phone. I don't even know how to use the phone. That is really bad. That is. Okay, here's the, so you go to the MT4, you go to the App Store, you set it's simple, let's the trade for, or you just write MT4. It will come. There we go. I need to even update mine. So now we know how to download MT4. It's just simple that it just comes. Amazing. Right now, we have the currency pairs on our, on our left and we have these moving digits, which start moving when the market is open. Because the market is closed, everything stops. Okay, except that cryptocurrencies which moves, which is also, it moves 24/7, every day, every time. Yeah.
In the weekend, which I didn't know.
Yeah, the crypto, the crypto moves every day. It has no break, but for the forest, it starts from Monday to Friday and that is it. You get, yeah, but it opens, okay, really opens that Sunday night, which I would say is not really advisable for you to trade, but if you really want to trade, it's up to you, if you know what you're doing. Yeah, but if you don't, just don't trade on Sundays and just be cool and wait, because we have to know that patient, as we talked about the last time, is the key to success in trading. So if you have the patience, wait, you get success. Right now.
And the bank holiday, Albert. It's also, if it's bank holiday, it's also close the market.
Yeah. When is bank holiday? This is a tricky one.
Monday, I saw something is, because now this Monday is bank holiday in America and in UK as well. So that's why I think.
Yeah, I, I know, but I think the market still open and moves slow when it's bank holiday. If anyone have seen it before.
Yeah, it still opens.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think it opens, goes really slow.
But you've still got the Asian market going on as well.
Yeah, hundred percent. So I would say it's fifty fifty. For me, that's my, yeah, but if anyone has other ideas, yeah, we can. Also, yeah. Okay. You're welcome. Alright, so right now we are at this page, the settings. So maybe we have already, let's say we have downloaded the MT4. When the MT4 is open, it comes with a new account, which is made by them, themselves is automatically there. So you can use that to practice. And I would say that if you have your broker already set up, what you need to do is just press on the new account. Then we have the demo, open the demo, that is open your demo account with the MT4 platform. Or if you have already created your account with the broker, you can just go to the login. Or this, then you type your broker name, then you select whatever broker you are using. Then you fill in your details, that is your password and your username. But if also you want to just use the demo account on the MT4, you just press on the demo account on the MT4, then that is the, the MT4 demo account. It comes like this. You register. Then you get your new account, you go on, this I've already registered, so I have, I have all my details there. That I can just do then. Then here we go, I open a new demo account. Are we on track, please?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is everything understood, understandable to this stage or to this place we are now?
Yes.
Cool. Right now, what we are going to do is just simple, how to add currency pairs. It's just a simple thing. Right now, we can see that we have limited currency pairs over here. And maybe we want to add more to it. We can see we have USJPY, but we can see we have NZD card. We don't have it here. We, we don't have a lot of currency pairs here. So if you want to add another currency pair to it, you just press on the plus sign on your right. You press on it. On the MT4 platform, it just comes with the forest and that's it. But with other platform, if you log in with your demo account on the broker side, it comes with me, the forest, the cryptos, it comes with major currency, the minor currencies. So what you always have to do is just click on it, it opens the currency pair for you. Then you just add whatever you want to add over there. So what we normally do is we have these currency pairs that we normally trade, that, yeah, we normally trade is like AUD, JPY and EUR, R and USD. So we can see here, we have AUD, JPY, that one we trade, we do trade the card CHF, but I think what I've researched on CHF is it really moves somehow slow. So if you are really, it gives good tips though, if you know what you were doing, it's good for you. But if you, you don't really know what you're doing, it's up to you to choose. But me, I know it just moves a bit strange a little bit and it moves slow. But you can add it because shifts is there for us when you see on shifts and we have the card CHF, you can come here and just add it, then you place your, your, what is it called, your pits or your trades over there. Copy and paste it. Do we all understand, please?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So we, we carry on, we are just adding the currency pairs, card JPY, we do trade it. You just click on the green circle for that, then you just add it to it, that Euro, yeah, Euro, AUD, Eurocard, the Euro GBP, the Euro NZD, Euro JPY, the Euro USD, NZD JPY, and this is the gold, we have the gold here as well, you can add it. Because we have, we know that Dan trade with the goat for us on the shift. So we have already had our people who trade for us, we have these ones. Cool. Now, we can see everything that we added is here now. Everyone understood?
Yeah.
Yes. Good, good. Now, those are the quotes that we are going to trade. And if you see downside on the next button is said the chat. You click on the chat. Now it comes like this. Sorry, I have a lot going on over here, which is not to be shown. Okay, okay. You go through it. Good. Now we have our chat here. So if you want, you can zoom in, zoom out to see it clear, to see what is really going on in the market. Now, how to change the colors of the market or of the candlestick? Everyone can see my colors is blue and yellow. People will be asking, how, how did you do it? It's just a simple thing. Just a simple thing. Anyone have any idea of how to do this, please? Give me, give me response, please. Anyone?
I can't remember.
Oh, cool. Anyone, anyone?
Can you repeat the question again, please? Sorry, what was the question?
These colors of the candlesticks. You can see it's really good. It's really, it looks beautiful like me.
I think you go to where there's a square. Square, circle and triangle. And then you choose the option.
No. What do you want?
I could say I should ask you.
Go to settings.
The settings.
You go to chat settings and then um, you go to, let's see.
Set, oh, settings are at the bottom.
Charts.
At the bottom.
Charts.
Charts, okay, okay, okay.
And then um.
Color right at the bottom.
Well done, team. Well done. I, I love this one. I, I'm really amazed. This is really good. I'm really amazed. Well done, well done. That is it. Now you know how to, what change our colors. Are we, are we clear? Or should we go back and do it again?
Yeah, can you show me again? Because I went in my, um.
Yeah, I was searching on mine and then I looked up and I see you lot got it.
We try to be smart over here, Albert, but you know.
So what you did today is just go on the settings, then go on the chat here.
Yeah.
Then you come on the chat and that is it. I will post that how to do this.
Thank you.
Colors on, in the chat so that everyone can see, I'll update later on. Maybe, let me see if I can. Yeah, so that is how to change the colors to know that the candlesticks, if you want your candlesticks that one going up to be green, there you go, you see the bar up. Yeah, I did it blue. It's there. You can do it green, the bar down. It's down candle. You can do it any color you want.
We don't see. All right, down, you know.
Yeah?
Yep.
Cool, cool. Then we have these settings as well. If you want your chats to look like a badge chat, you can set, select the bar chat. If you select the bar chat, you go to the chat here, you can see it's the bar chat. You see, it changes. Or you can go back. Then the chat, you can go on the line one, if you want the line, fine. It's up to you. If only you can see and you know what you're doing. Where's the, I can't even see my lights, but anyways, it will tend into line if you want a line one. But I think everyone at the beginning or wherever you, you are, your level is, I think the candlesticks are well understandable. So we normally, most of the traders use their candlesticks, which makes it understandable. Really cool. Alright, I'm trying to get this. Um, the settings for everyone. Why should I paste it? Please, should I post it in the or the Telegram group, please? What do you want it?
Oh, what for the settings?
Yes, please.
Uh, put in the Telegram, just so then everyone's got it.
Oh, cool, cool. Then I'm coming. Alright, let's move on to that. I'll give it, I'll send it when we have done. Oh, let me, let me see if I can be here. Oh, fine. And I'll send you the currency pairs that we trade as well, which you can just go in and see if it's not there, you just add it to it. Okay?
Thank you.
Cool. Alright, so moving to one strategy that we normally talk about. So first of all, what we need to know is the timeframe that we are in. So maybe you ask, okay, why is all this about the H over there? Why is it about? Yeah, it's simple, is the timeframe. So if you want to know what timeframe you are trading in at that particular time, you just press on the H1, which is at the left side of the top button, you press on it, you can see all timeframe. We have the M1, which stands for what, please? Help me out there.
A minute.
One minute. The H1.
One hour.
Good. D1.
Die, one die.
Then there W1.
One week.
One week. And we go to the bigger one, which is the month. Thank you, God. I, I love this. I love this coordination you're doing now. Cool. So right now we know how to set our timeframe. People will be asking, so what does this timeframe really mean? Have you asked yourself before? What does this timeframe always means? Well.
It's kind of the trade holding for.
Every day.
Alright, alright. So what I understand about it is the candlesticks. So if we see this, we are on the month, that means every candlestick that we see here, a full candlestick, it's a month, hundred percent. Is that easy?
Yes.
Cool. So if we go to the M30, what will you say about the candlesticks, please?
About two minutes. Each one represents.
Every half hour.
Cool. Each one represents half an hour or thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, yeah.
Good, 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 good. I'm loving this. Let's go, let's go. If you are loving it.
We're loving it.
You need to do one thing for me, which is always steady and land and end as well. Alright, guys. Cool. I, I love that. Alright, now we go to the next button at the downside is the trades. It's called the trade. This is where your balances, your equity is, your margin, your free margin is. Okay, so your balance, everyone knows their balances, the amount you put in. Okay, the equity is there, is how much is left in your account. So let's say if we place a trade right now and we are, our trade is in negative five, what do you think our equity will be? And maybe our, let's, let's work this out. So our, our balance will be hundred, let's say our balance is hundred pounds. And we are in negative five for our trade. Ninety five. Great. Everyone will be like, how, how did you get the negative five pounds? It's just simple. The trade that you are in, your accounts together with your equity to form the balance. Is it clear?
Yeah.
Great. Is anyone confused? If you are confused, just say it. We just go over again. Everyone on track, please?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Good.
I'm following.
Oh, cool. We move on to the free margin. The free margin helps you to get the leverage. So let's say, this is what I want everyone to pay attention to, the margin level. Every time, you should make sure your margin level, which I haven't really played the trade yet, because the account is really new. You can see the downside, the margin level is in percentage. So you should always make sure that your margin level is above hundred percent, so that you don't get a margin call. You get me? Make sure that your margin level is hundred percent. Because sometimes when you are, you, you really know what the trade is going or the trade, how it's, it's going. You really know that this trade is going to the top or the moon, but actually because it's in a pullback and it's coming, it's still going at the different direction that you, you met. It should be going at the other direction, but it's going at a different direction, because it's a pullback, it needs to have a support. Then just jump or bounce back again. But your, your balance is still like shaky, it's still going down and your margin level is below hundred. What the brokers would do is to try and save you. So when your margin level reaches twenty five percent, the broker will start closing your trades for you. Whether you, you, you are going to like succeed in that trade, particular trade, and you are not really succeeding at that particular trade at the same time, because it's having a pullback. The broker will try and save you by closing all your, what, your trades. Yeah, so everyone should make it like a point that at that margin level, it should be above hundred percent every time.
Right.
Alright.
So the margin call, the margin call is when they close the trades, yeah?
Yes. You can see your, when you, you, you have the margin call, you can see that your balance will start in the red, it will be in the red color, a deep red, meaning you are in the danger zone. So you should never ever make it below hundred. It should be above hundred, okay? And maybe one will, why, why, how or why are people getting margin calls? The major, major, major problem that we have, even me, I had when I was a beginner, is the inappropriate use of the low size. Should I say greedy or should I say, I, I wasn't, um, I wasn't learning or I was disobedient, anyhow you say it, but it's not using the right.
Doing proper risk management, you have to send, you are there, proper risk management.
Guys, this is the secret of trading. Let me tell you all. Yeah, the secret of trading is risk management, proper risk management, no matter what. Let me tell you. Anyone who plays a trade, whether it's going down or it's going up, it's not in a, in the wrong decision, it's the right decision. You are right. Maybe I can play the trade right now in the buy and you can play the trade right now in the sell. You are right. I am right. But the whole point is, what time are you placing it? Maybe we, we will both be placing it at the wrong time or at the right time, is either one. So if you place it earlier or later, the pullback will get you. But because you use. But because you use proper risk management, you can still stay in and never think of it. And it will surely comes where you are going or where you wanted it to go. That's why Mr. Nathan always say this. The marker, uh, the market always repeats itself. What happens in the past always happens in the future. Have anyone realized it?
Yeah.
That is it. No one is ever wrong in trading, but what you are wrong is, is it the proper lock size? Are you using? Proper risk management? And are you placing it at the perfect time? Is any, everyone on this with me? Everyone under- understanding what we meant?
Yeah, it's a timing.
Great. Great, great.
Alright, sorry, I've got one question.
Okay, cool, go on.
Um, when you say at the right time, I guess is it as soon as you get a signal or an indicator that. You should place it?
Yeah, hundred percent. Me, me, we are very fortunate because we have our shift app, which is helping us. Which makes our money. So you should always notice this. Let us, today is not about shit, but. We, let us go there and show you something. Um. What's my name again? Oh, uh.
I was gonna say, stop sharing your screen and do it, because it's recorded, isn't it?
Oh, sorry, sorry, guys, um.
The password is gonna be for everyone to see.
He wants to show off his money.
Moving like Netflix, new subscription.
Okay, um. Oh. Sorry, guys, I'm coming, um. Alright. Now we go. Wait, great, great. I'm going to share my screen again. Sorry, guys, my, my family, they are really noisy, so.
No, don't. No, apologies to your family.
Alright, thank you, boss man. Alright, um, so we go on the ship. Today is not about shit, but let me do this for everyone to know this. So we got, everyone can see my screen, yeah?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Great. So we can see something here. At the top right, what do you see there? Jay Adams, the boss with Jay Adams, yeah, at the top right.
Market execution.
Great, market execution. What does that mean?
Go into the, um, straight away, the trade will be made straight away.
Right. So that is the time we are talking about. If it's going to rate, you just go in to rate. And we are fortunate, you just copy and paste. Always, what I've noticed is always our trades here. It's going straight, so you just copy and paste. But if in case you open and it's written like buy limit or sell limit. It means that, yeah, it's pertinent to go somewhere, but it's not the right time to go right now or at that point. Yeah, so you just copy it. We'll go through it today as well to know how to pre- um, place the. Uh, limit, sorry? Anyone talking, please? No, oh, okay, okay. We, you carry on. So you, we go on with that, um, the buy limit, the stop limits. Then that, that even the buy limits and stop limits are also called dependent orders. They are orders which are pending. Which need to be executed when the time is needed. Is your question answered, please? Hello?
Hello.
Yeah, is, is your question answered, please? The one who asked question, please?
Yeah, it was a lady. I think, uh, yeah, this is the answer, but I don't know who asked the question.
Okay.
But this is the answer, I think.
But did everyone get it, please? Did everyone get what you're talking about?
Yep.
Yeah, so what we should know is on the. What they normally do is market, just copy and paste. Yeah, but, oh, oh, always, what, if it's limited, um, my limit. Limit to you have to, you place your trades, okay?
Can you mute your mics, please? You mute your, can you mute your mic if it's not muted? Because we can all hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so we crack on. Um, the next button is the history. So the history talks about. Whatever trade you have made, whether in the month, whether in the beach. Whatever, ever account you have put in on the MT four is here. So we can see the date. Which is already there at the top there. I can see I right now opening the account and it's there. Which is, I wish it was a real money, but it's not, but it's a demo account. And what you should know is this. Always treat your demo account as your real account. Use it as if it's a real money. Don't mis- mis- misuse it. Because what I have noticed is the technique that you use here, you are building your technique. So whatever you use here. Whether you use poor risk management, whether you, you just put in trades anyhow. Whatever you do here, you are keeping it as a behavior, which will really affect you when you put it in a real account. So always, always, please, make sure you treat your account. Demo, whether demo or real, treat it as a real account. Yes or yes?
Yeah.
Is that cool?
Yes.
So, maybe, maybe I have already placed my trades for last week, last three weeks. Yeah, and I, I, I don't really know what my histories are. You just go to the week there, you can see the week there. Everything will come there, what you did in the week, the last month is at the top there as well. You can press on the month, everything will come, then you can go on the custom, that where you can just select maybe three. Years ago, what you did, you can just select it, you press on that, okay? We just show you every detail that you have done. Is it understood right now? Yeah? Yes or yes? Cool, cool. Cool. Right now, I want us to do this strategy that we normally do. As P and T, Mr. Nathan has taught us, that each, is it each more cool? I'm not learning the pronunciation, is it? Each more.
It's a local cloud, yeah.
Great, great. Anyone knows what that is? Have anyone heard about it? Anyone?
Yeah, I've heard it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, I've heard it.
Yes. Yeah, I, I thought I wasn't going to get an answer. I was about to say, oh, have you guys been going to the Facebook page? Well, hopefully, all of us have been going to the Facebook page, which is really good. Um, so, right now, um. To add that each more cloud of, what you need to do is just go on the F at the top. So I, do, do everyone see it, the F, I went to the F at the top. Then you have the windows, you just click on the main window and this is the each moku. Oh, yeah, or whatever it's called. The, the name seems like it's technical, isn't it? But actually, it's really clear and it, it really makes a good understanding of the market as well. So what you do is you just click on it, then the settings will come. Are we on the track?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So, what we normally do is we, because my background is al- already black at the chat level. So we will just put everything on black, except one thing, except the chukus palm. The chukus pan will remain the purple one, which I'll talk about it soon. So you just click on the black, then the four pixels, you save, you go. That one, the same thing, black, four pixels, then that, um, that fourth one. Two black, then. The four pictures, yeah? Um, black, yeah, there we go. Then the red one, black. Four pieces, um, four black. Then done. Can we see any difference in this chart, please? Can anyone see any difference in this chart?
Yeah, I can see the cloud in the background.
You can see the cloud, hmm, alright, alright. Anyone else? Can see any different?
Yeah, yeah, me too.
So, we can see a purple line. We can see a purple line, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see the purple line. Great. This purple line have anyone come across a video in the. Facebook page, tips and tricks.
Yeah, money land.
How many of us have seen this?
Yeah.
Line. Yeah, the money land.
Good. Now you know how to set your money line.
Yeah.
Great. I get, I got only one response, which is.
Yes, 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 just looking at it with her eyes. It looks fantastic.
Great, great, great. So right now we know that, right, money line is there and we should know this. As Mr. August, um, Mr. Augustine, Mr. Nathan always say, what happens in the past always happens in the future. It goes up, it will come down, the money line. So if you want to know more about this money line, please. We will go to the Facebook page, tips and trips, trade. This is called the money line. It's called what? The money line. Alright, guys?
Yes, yes.
Good. Right now, we, we need to add one thing to it. The indicator Mr. Nathan has been talking about, it's called the D marker as well, the D marker. Which, um, the latest video on the page talks about the D marker and eleven AM trade. Have anyone watched it?
Yeah.
Yes, I have.
Yes, yes, of course.
Good, good. I'm getting good vibe now. Good, good. I love it. So what you need to do is, maybe you don't have your D marker here. What you need to do is add the D marker. You go on the F again. Then you go on the main. Window, then you can scroll up and see the D marker there. You just click on the D marker, you click on done. And we can see the D marker below the screen. Can anyone see the D marker below the screen, please?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Good. So now we know how to set the, the money line and we know how to do what, the D marker. Everyone here on the right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
Great, great. So, wow, it is, for now, we have covered how to add currency pair. What the, um, margin call is. Or what we should be expecting not to get margin call, the candlesticks, the timeframe. And how to add the, uh, money line and the D mark. Are we good, please? Are we, we good?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Right now we go on. Go on how to produce the trade. So. We already have aspects, who we are copying from. So we just copy and paste. So you go on the trade on the right side of the. Um, MT four, you click on the trade, then here we go. We have four, I'm going to talk about five different type of executions. So below or beneath the E, Euro USD, what can you see?
Instant execution.
The execution, that everyone, or maybe some people won't have this idea. That maybe you can really press on that as, as the execution, but you can really press it and get options over there. So when you press on next, we have the five types of executions. We have the. The right moment execution, we have the buy limit, we have the sell limit, we have the buy stop and the sell stop. Okay, so before we go on, does anyone have any idea of what the buy limit is? Anyone?
No.
Okay, so what I would say is, from the buy limit, sell limit, buy stop, sell stop, they are all called. I have classified them as pending orders. They are orders which are pending to be executed. Do you guys get me?
Yes.
Good. So the buy limit is when the market is above where you wanted to buy. So let's say, right now, I want to buy this currency pair. I want to buy this, but. I want to buy it from this point, but the market is already up. Yeah, so for instance, if I don't really want to sit down and watch the screen, which is obviously. Not for us to really watch it. Yeah, so you just set your, what, your buy limit. That means when the candlestick or the market comes really down and touch where you want to execute your trade. It will automatically execute your trade and put you on the trade, then it start going. Alright, guys?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All what I'm talking about, everything I'm talking about, we, you can find it. You can really find it on the Facebook page. So if you want to, you know, to know more about it. What is what? You go on the Facebook page, you sit down, then you do what? You go through the videos, step by step. The more you learn.
The more you learn.
The more you earn.
The more you earn.
Keep in mind, the more you learn, the more you earn. So make sure you are learning from that. While the platform and Facebook, which Mr. Nathan and Adam Mentos, Mr. Augustine. And everyone have put together to help us all. So we know our buy limit now. So we move on to the buy stop. So if the buy limit is when the price is above the price we want to buy, then buy stop will be what?
Below.
Below. Hundred percent. So maybe let's take this trade for instant again. Let's say if I want to buy here. That's one point twenty-two, one, three, eight, but the market having really reached there, right? Good. So what I have to do is place that order. If I place that order there. The market, what it will do is, when it gets there, it will automatically activate the trade and move on. To, there, there's no need for me to sit on the chat and watch, watch, watch. No, we, we want financial freedom. We don't watch. That, we don't really want to be securities on the market. Do you get me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Good. And we, we go to the sell limit and the sell stop is the same, but opposite. So the sell stop, um, the sell limit will be when the entry point is above where the market is. So maybe I, I want to sell, yeah, but here I can see that the market have visited this place. And went down. So the market will probably come and visit that place again. So I have to wait. But I just want to place the trade. So like, when they come and visit that place, the market will just activate my trade. And I'll carry on automatically. So what you need to do is just. And I'll carry on automatically. So what you need to do is just place your, what, your sell limit. So the market will go up, hit it, and activate it, then start falling. Anyone understanding this, please?
That's fantastic.
Yes, good. We go onto that sell limit. The sell limit is the opposite way. So the sell limit is when the trade is about. When you, where you want to execute your trade is really about the price action. So may, let's say, the price action is here, you can see the red and the blue one is there. So maybe let's say my trade, I want to execute it here at one point two, one, seven, nine. So for me not sitting on the trade, watching it, I see if I am the, um, security on the market. Which we all know that the market is not a friend to us. When the market get you, it gets you. So don't treat the market as a friend, it's not your friend, it doesn't even know you. So what you need to do is just praise your, place your, um, so stop, which is here. The one, two, one, seven, nine, six. So if you place that stop, um, stop. Um, what is it called? Sell stop. Automatically, when that trade or the market reaches that point. It will automatically activate your, your, um, your trade. Then it carries on with the market, then you'll be trading. Is everything understandable to this point, please?
Yeah.
Hundred percent. And we have the market execution, which is the instant, at that moment. Which shift help us to do always. Are we getting it now?
Yes.
Yep.
Great.
Um, sorry, um, to interrupt the games, Mary. I just wanted to ask you, is this video going to be available on the Facebook page?
Um, we'll send it out, we'll send it out.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry, because I'm driving, I'm just trying to understand when you use the buy limit and the, um, buy stop. Um, yeah, okay, thank you.
Great. Let's carry on. Um, so when you press on the market execution, you have the board like this. So what you need to do is take your lot size, that is the black one. You put the risk management, proper risk management, Mr August now posted the. Um, yeah, the link in the chat, which you can use and utilize it well. The more you learn, the more you earn, remember that. So you, you use proper risk management there. Then you, you just copy and paste your stop loss, your take profits, sorry, your take profits. Then what that is buy, you buy, when you sell, you sell. Is it simple?
Yeah. Definitely, yeah.
Yes. Good, good. Now, let's go to the next one, which is. The buy limit. So when I click on the buy limit, we can see that we have something called the price. So that price is the price that you are targeting for the market to get executed. When it reaches that place. So let's see, we say, we said that the buy limit. So for instance, yeah, we said the buy limit is when the market or the price action is above. Where we want to buy. Yeah, so maybe, let's say here, these are where the prices are, yeah? Can everyone see it?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Good. So let's say it's above what, where we want to place. So we want to place our market. Or our trade, our point, one point two, one, seven, seven, six. That's where we want to place our trade, so that when they reaches there, the, um, market would automatically be activated for us. Yeah? So you just go on the trade, then you go on the buy limit. Then what you need to do is first check your lot size, proper lot size used. After that, you come to the price. We said we want to buy at one point. You always have to rub the first digits which comes in, then you enter your digits. That is one point two, one, seven, seven, six. That is the price we want to buy, right?
Yep.
Good. Then you, you place your, um, stop loss, then do your take profits. Then after that, you just press on there, place order. Because the market is closed, we can't do anything right now. But what you should know is this, after you have placed that order, it will come underneath this place. You will see that they have written order here and your, um. Your pending orders will be listed down here. Have we all seen that before?
Yes.
Great, great. Even if you haven't seen it, don't worry, you will see it when you go on the Facebook page. Everything is there. Mr Nathan did some examples, which is really good, it, it really teaches you. But if you don't really understand it, you come back to me, I'll make sure that I get some. Video for you to watch to get understanding, yeah? But ob- obviously, you will see it on the Facebook page. Alright, guys?
Okay.
Good. So the same applies to that sell stop. You do the same thing, sell limits, the buy limits, everything is the same, which is. How we are doing, right? Um, good. Copying we are, we, we, do we understand what we went through? What we learned right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. So, um, right now, we have learnt a lot. Which I don't know whether we have already keep all of them in our mind. But if you really want to know, while we talked about the video, the recording will be provided. So you can really watch it over and over. Remember, learn more and you earn more. If you don't learn, hmm, it's up to you. By then, it will surely pay out. The last one I want to talk about is the. Okay, the flat sign, which is, which really helps you to, you know, know the price. So that on your right side, you can see when I move this, um, arrow. You can see there's a white thing going up and down. Can everyone see it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is that, the price is there. So this can help you to know where the price. Um, you want to really place your trade or the price which is there. You understand, please?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Yes.
Great, great. So right now, we go to the shape, the up there, you can see there is the shape, the, um. From the plus F, then you have shapes there. So if you click on that one. This is where you can see your horizontal line, your vertical lines. Your fib, fib, and everything is here. What you need to do is just click on it, maybe we want the horizontal line. You click on it, then you come to where you want to place your horizontal line, maybe beneath this. First, you have to remove this one, then you click on it. Can everyone see any change? There is a horizontal red line there. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And that one, you, you can really move it as well. You just hold it, you move it up, down, sideways, anyway. So if you want the horizontal, the vertical, the any, any line you want. You just come here, you do it. And if you want a triangle too, you can see the triangles here. Add objects. You go to the, um, add objects, there are many objects here, which you can use. So maybe if I want the rectangle, I go there, I press on my screen. I drag it, I, I have my rectangle there. Is it easy?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Good. So now I can say, we know about ninety-nine percent of MT four. Can everyone like?
Yep.
Yeah, we know. And, um, that is this one. Which I think it applies to the MT four on the, um, laptop. Where you can set alarm and when the, um, your point is hit, it just alert you. You send notification to your phone, yeah, then you get it. So that one two will be as a sentence. Then you go on the other sentence, oh, sorry. Um, we go about, we go, yeah, we go over it later on. That, that will come later on. Okay, so for now, that is for the phone. Is it understood right now, please? Is everything understood?
Yes, thank you.
Good. So I think.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think we'll need.
Yes, thank you, Mary.
On the, um, the one for the laptop. Or do you guys have time to go through over the one on the laptop? It's quite a day. It's up to you guys, you need to choose. You want us to go over the one on the laptop, or do you want us to call it a day for now?
Let's call it again.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Hello?
Go, uh, hello, boss man.
You, you, yes, please, yes, um, um, it's honest, yes. I just wanted to ask, what are the charts, uh, on them, on, um. Are they real time? Or they are just historic? Are they real time? Does it give us what will happen? Uh, in the, in the second, i- 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 in the minute, ten minutes?
Can anyone help, please?
Do you mean as in, is it up to date with time?
Yes, please, yes.
Yeah, they mirror the, they mirror the live shots.
Or the real live chat, okay, 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 okay. Thank you very much, thank you very much.
I love my team. We are here to support and help. Good, thank you very much. Any questions, please? I can see there's a question coming, but it's not coming. Alright, uh, we, we, we will end, I think, um, next week. Um, Nat will take over and always, as I said, there's only one thing that I always say. The more you learn, the more you do.
All you earn.
Don't learn, don't expect, do what? Yeah, to earn. Hundred percent. So keep on, wow, there for you to utilize. Wow, I'm coming, let me just.
Please, how soon are we gonna expand the, the recording? Some of us jump.
Uh, soon as this is done, it will download and then I'll pass it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm trying to share my screen here, oh.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, cool, um, wow, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, wait, where is it? This one. Great. What I want. I'm going over again, I'm going over again, because it's really relevant. It's really relevant. We all have, wow, please. Please and please again, utilize it well. The more you learn, the more you do what, you earn. Good. And we have the Facebook page. If you don't, if you are not really on this page. Please tell your app line or tell any one of us, we'll help you to be on there. So if you go on the Facebook. Which might be somewhere, um, come on, my network is not, cool. I have, I've already cleaned it again for me to get easy access to it. So I just click on the, this one. Tips and trips. Look, there are many trainees over here, many videos. So if you want the residual incomes, the other, the trading. The other ones. So we are talking about the trading today. So you press on the trading, every bit of it is here. Every, every single bit of it. Whatever we are talking about is not. Like we are talking from our brain, it's really here. So what you need to do is what? To watch and do what? Learn. If you want to earn, you watch and learn. So I'll call it today. Thank you guys for today. And I hope everything we.
Thank you, Albert, it's really nice, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm mute, please, I'm mute, I'm mute, I'm mute, I just.
Thank you, Albert, I'm sorry.
Honestly.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you as always for coming through to the Sunday study session, everybody. We're gonna be back next week, same time. Um, Albert, I definitely appreciate you covering for me, bro, honestly. As in, I just got home, um. About half hour before the session started, so I wasn't sure if I was gonna make it or not. But I'm glad that I was able to make it and to actually watch as well, do you know what I'm saying? It was very important. Really appreciate the research that you put in, do you know what I'm saying? And the time, the time and, and the energy that you put into the presentation. So yeah, thank you so much for that, bro, honestly. Um, yeah, man.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Albert.
Thanks, Albert, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Alright, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.